Call this August 8th, Jackson County Convention Meeting to Order. Have our roll call.
Mr. One, Mr. Two.
President.
Mr. Two, Mr. Three.
President.
Mr. Three, Mr. Four.
Present.
Mr. Four, Mr. Five.
Present.
And Senator Marshall.
And I have a question.
Yeah.
Mr. Reynolds, you can be there. Have a recommendation by Mr. Reynolds and our partner by Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you for the opportunity to be here, all gathered and discuss the county's business. All of we ask special prayers this day to, please watch over and protect our military men and women that are serving this country, protecting the freedoms that we all enjoy. Please watch over our local law enforcement, law enforcement everywhere. Just be with them, guide them, and help them throughout the day and throughout the country. We ask these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
My pleasure. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of the table of the agenda, we have eight items on the agenda. Are there any changes before we proceed? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Some will.
Motion every second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those say no. Have no words, no public comments. They do not have a mention of previous meeting. No old business at this time, so move straight on to new business. The first item is regarding the creole limit.
Be short, but being concerning, this is Scottsboro basically, in Gunnersville. Mike Carter, my boyfriend, is a licensed guide on Lake Gunnersville. And in the last three or four years, the creole limit has diminished drastically. And we just decided to take it upon ourselves, which no one would step out and do this, but I do the footwork, I coordinate all this, but it's the Lake Gunnersville Conservation Board. And we've had two meetings, and we may have an August 28th, at 3:00 PM at the COA building in Jackson County Park. And I had spoken with Tommy Haynes about this. We need to get, one thing that was on our agenda was to get the creole limit from 10 down to 5, to try to see if that would help with the decrease in decline of the fishing. And Mr. Hodges has been to our meeting, and he's learning a lot about fishing, I think, of what we've been discussing. So, but that's one thing that we see a lot of these out-of-towners, and we're not, we want the business. I know you want the tourists, you want the tournaments here. And we've seen so much of people taking away the creole to eat. And if somebody comes here from out-of-state, and I'm not downing out-of-staters, it's just, they're gonna go out three or four times a day and catch their creole limit, and come back and bring it to their camp or whatever, and go home with their allotted fish and mower. And we're gonna, this is what this is about. I've got like a rough draft of what y'all can look at. And I'm going to Marshall County Wednesday to address their county commission and the legislative delegation also. I talked with Mr. Ainsworth about two weeks ago. And it's something that we're gonna, that's one step. And there's a lot of work that has to be done on these tournaments that come here in learning. I know they are supposed to know how to run tournaments, but you see bags of fish sitting on the grass in this 100-degree weather. That's not good. To put three to five fish in a little bitty bag of water, they're gonna have to start learning how to take better care of their tournaments in that aspect of it. And we have, you see dead fish, we were at Goose Pond yesterday, and after, they had three tournaments that went out at this point. And, you know, a lot of people don't know how to deal with fish like that, and they put them in their live wells all day and leave them there. They're not gonna live. They're not gonna live. And that's, I guess, another educational thing that needs to be done. But this that I'm bringing to you today is to cut the creole limit from 10 to 5. And hopefully, it's kind of a study in a year or two, see if that works, or see if we can see a decline. But the main thing, objective that we're going for is to restock. Because the biologists that were at some of our meetings, they said that the creole limit was fine, you know, to, we could let it go 5. But the spawning size fish, the 15 to 18-inch fish are not there, not as many as need be. And that's detrimental to the spawn and having, I mean, the fish, I mean, the lake has fish, that's not the problem. It's just that size of fish that's on the decline, and they've been seeing that like for the last three or four years in the lake. And we're gonna try to go to the state in February and make a proposal before the state conservation board to try to get them to help fund the fish. And if they don't, we have individuals that have come up and said they would, you know, help with stocking. And we're talking about 60 to 100,000 fish. And we had a gentleman that spoke at our last meeting a couple weeks ago from a pretty out of Montgomery. And he said that a lake as big as Gunnersville, that his price would be like 50 cents per fingerling. And if they were like two inches, two, three inches, they had a better survival rate to do that, or go that route. And that's why he was talking about 60 to 100,000 fish. So you're looking at 50, $50,000. But as, again, as I say, if the state does not step up and at least, you know, do part of it, we've got money backers that says they will help do this. So it's just something that needs to be done because a lot of the clients that these guides have, they say they're not coming back because they're not catching the fish that they used to. They don't wanna come down here and just catch a big fish. Not necessarily, they want to catch numbers. And most of them, you know, put the fish back, which is a good thing. You catch it, take a picture, and release. That's the name of the game. But there are several things that we've got to work on. And at this next meeting, they invited it within attendance, we had over 100 at the meeting. And they are gonna bring like three to five things that we can take before the board possibly, and see if we can, you know, get some changes made other than just restocking. But it does need to be restocked in that size fish and for that two to four pound range. Because I know there's a lot of revenue that comes from this way for Scottsboro and Gunnersville.
You have a copy of that?
I have a copy, and y'all can read it and then make your own, what I, you know, if y'all decide this is what you wanna do. Make one with a better head or whatever on it. And maybe you can get it back to me, and that way I can get it to Mr. Ainsworth or Mr. Haynes.
The basic process of this, there is a big process as of today, and there are a lot of pieces to this that need to be looked at. One is the restocking of the lake. There are other things that were talked about in those meetings about tournaments. And I think there are many meetings that will have to be had in the future to determine a lot of that. This is one thing that came up in the last meeting, and I believe Representative Haynes had looked into. And basically, what is being requested here is a letter from the county commission to the state conservation board, correct, requesting that they reduce the creole limit from 10 to 5 per day. So that's what we would need to do if we wanna move forward to support that change. It would require a letter from the commission to do that. And of course, we're just saying today, if we're not prepared to do that, we can move it to the next meeting. But we did wanna put it out here and see, you know, have some discussion, see what the thoughts were on it. And Bob, Mr. Manning, I'd like to hear some of your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I agree 100% with what she's saying. And I've been fishing here for many years, bass fishing, not basically release everything, I guess. But that creole along with the tournament fishing is putting a tremendous pressure. The major turn, I guess the biggest tournament is Big Back Splash. And they've moved that towards right during the spawning season now. And that's taken out a lot of those size fish that she's talking about. I know it brings a lot of revenue and a lot of money to the area, but it used to be a made, for some reason, they moved it to March, right in, during the spawning season. And I also have seen fish handled like she explained, not in a good manner. They'll be live when you weigh them in, but when you release them, a lot of them die.
Lot of stress.
Lot of stress. And it's 100-degree weather, you know how hot the lake was. Even if you're putting, most people do put some chemical in it to try to revive the fish. And a lot of people put ice in there, but some of the ice even has things in it that hurts the fish. If you don't have the ice properly and leave it bagged, you know, certainly you have to do all that stuff. But there's definitely a huge decline on the fish. Most people I know are catching now.
Well, that's, it's not, some people are lucky, and they'll catch eight pounds, seven pound, five. But that's not, you know, people say, well, fishing is great. You know, some of these people don't want to be, discuss this basically. But it's got to be brought to light because there's a problem, and it needs to be fixed now.
Yeah, I've talked with some people that's been fishing for 30 years, great fishermen, local fishermen. And I've talked to them even recently, and they're saying the same thing, they're not catching nowhere near the amount of fish they used to catch.
Does this creole limit, does it only apply to certain types of fish? Is it?
Just bass.
Just bass?
Bass only at this time, yes.
Like crappie is, you know, it's a big crappie lake here, too. And that's, there's plenty of supply of crappie.
Yeah.
And they only live about three years anyway. They're gonna die in about three years. But bass are not that way. You know, bass live a lot longer than that, or most of them do if they're in the right environment. So I, you know, I see what she's talking about firsthand.
And another thing is not just necessarily the tournament fishermen, these people that come, their bucket list is to fish on Gunnersville Lake. And people just, I wouldn't know how, and I, some of you gentlemen may know, to fish a fish. And if you catch a fish in deep water and bring it to the surface and you put it in a live well, it's gonna flip on its side. And if you don't know how to get that air out of its lungs, it'll die, if you don't know how to do that. And that's a lot of educational things that a lot of, I wouldn't know how to do it. I know how to do it, but I couldn't do it. I'll put it that way.
Mr. Campbell, do you?
Yeah, I'll have a call here. And I was on the phone with a citizen, and he had moved here just for fishing. He was from Mississippi. And he was calling about a rope problem, but in our conversation, I got brought up, and I asked him, you know, what's, being an outsider, growing up here, I guess I, we get kinda numb to it. But I said, what would be the largest attraction, and what seems to be the biggest draw? And I guess this has been a lot of discussions with the lake falling out of Bassmaster's top 10. But he made mention of, he said, you know, look, if, it's the lake is really what matters, he said. If you have nice hotels and good places to eat, that's all great, he said. But the hardcore fishermen is traveling from out of town. They wanna catch fish, they wanna catch a lot of fish. So if the fishing's not there, if the lake's not there, none of the other stuff really matters. And he made mention of a couple things that I, that I'd like Ms. Thomas to know. He mentioned about maybe closing some of the creeks.
Yes, that was mentioned.
And offwind at times during some of that. And what brought that up was the Mud Creek, the construction we have going on at Mud Creek. He asked if it was gonna be closed during that spawning period. But, and then he also, he said, you know, I go all over fishing these tournaments. And everywhere I go, there's a launch fee to launch your boat.
That's also mentioned, too.
Maybe, you know, maybe something like that for folks, place money for launch fee, and then that money be used on the lake. So just started off with that as a couple things I heard out there from talking with.
And it was also mentioned, the same thing that you said, another thing was, everybody that comes to fish have to pay a $20 fee, and it be like year-round. Some out-of-towners or even locals, a $20 fee to launch your boat at any ramp, it's good at any ramp, and good for a year. That was mentioned, someone brought that up.
Also lowering the tournament limits sometimes. Most of them have a best five fish.
A lot of them with three, but some of them with five.
Some of them go with three, but, you know, most of them used to have five.
Yes.
You know, a lot of people feel like if you lower that down to three, you still have the same competitiveness in the event, but yet you're not, you're just carrying 60% of the fish around instead. Just a thought.
Questions or comments about this, this time? Most of the comments I've heard about have been positive. I'm learning a whole lot about all this. What do we want to move forward with this now? Do we wanna put this on next week? How long will it go?
I'd say it's not more than, everybody's in agreement. I'd like to say next week, 'cause this is all we've been. I don't know anything about this one.
Do we wanna continue our meeting and do it next week, or do we have to work that?
I think, y'all have something to add to this. Like I said, this is really amazing.
There's a pretty strong consensus, I know, from the group that was there. And I didn't know, you know, just from that group, obviously, you wanna hear from other folks, but from the few things I've heard this afternoon today, seems like there's a pretty positive response towards it. But it wouldn't hurt to have, you know, have that out there for a week, and then continue that to vote next week.
Is there a meeting next week?
No, we can continue it if we want, if we need to do this. I think this is fairly timed. Is it time sensitive? What kind of timeframe are we looking for?
No, it's, it's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
Should we go meet with Marshall County next week?
Wednesday morning.
This week?
This week.
When's the work session tomorrow? When do you plan to make your presentation?
Uh, in February.
Oh, what about this? Do you plan on getting this before then?
I will have to find out. I think that can be presented in February also, but we've got a lot of signatures to get from the legislative office and the one in Marshall County.
Okay.
And Chamber, and of course, the Chamber of Commerce. I went by and got a draft of Mr. Parsons, what they're gonna look at signing also.
So in that case, we'll put this on a work session for next week for any further discussion. If we have any questions or anything, then we can move forward. Oh, I'm sorry, for the week after, yeah, we're gonna make it. That way, that's where you want it, right?
That's right.
For the week after. And we actually have a work session and meeting to follow, so we'll have that on those, as long as there's no objection at that point. Over with. Thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you so much for listening.
All right, move on to the next item, and the Higher Reboard Recommendation for the vacant parks temporary positions. Recommendation, letter in your packets. Any discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation letter?
Make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What's the time? How long was it meant to review this? Six months?
Yeah, I think we've got a lot to do between now and February. I'd like to get to February. But actually, I simply said no.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Okay, next item, I wish to approve the IDB appropriation. This is for $30,000 to continue on appropriation that was given last year for projects in Stevenson. So we have a motion to appropriate the remaining dollars and all the necessary, with the word qualifications were met for these dollars.
Qualifications weren't met?
Yes.
They are operating in uniform, folks?
Correct. Do we have a motion to approve the remaining $30,000?
I'm already obligated. I don't want to motion, please.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those say no. Next item, a motion to sign the Alabama Careers Contract for the Council on Aging. That is, here's the contract.
Yes.
Okay. This is the annual agreement that has to be done for the Alabama Care Program. And would you like to tell anything about it, or?
It's a, it's a program to help caregivers to, it's a rescue type program, and it's fully funded by this contract. We don't have to pull any local dollars into it. And we got, I think about 30 clients at this time that were on that program.
It funds that program entirely.
Yes.
And again, this is an annual fund, our agreement has to be done. Any questions or comments on that? Anybody need to see? Do we have a motion to approve the agreement?
Somebody.
Motion, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those say no. Next item, a motion to approve transportation grant application for COA.
The first page is the letter as it will be sent with the application. Second page shows the source of funding. And because the local funding comes from other than just the county commission, it comes from contracts and ad sales. And then we have some other contributions that go into those fundings.
Questions or comments on this? Basically, the annual budget that has to be sent through the unfair.
Right.
And the local share, is it saying here where some of the local share comes from? Is it trying to say where some of the local share comes from?
Yes, it does, in the boxes on the second page. That is some of the local shares. There's a, there's a couple of, well, it's added in, it's not added in as donations, but we do have another source through the city there who are asking for the help with the bus. And plus, they do some other funding as well.
Questions or comments on this?
Does the city agree to their part?
I got that tonight, correct?
Yes.
It is my list in here.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the application? Motion in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those say no. Next item, the Mack Truck Program for Public Works, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir. The purpose of this discussion, it's Mack Truck time again, and time to let them know where to intend as far as building the trucks. But one thing I wanted to bring forward was a recent discussion with Russ Wood, Wood Auction Company. And he wanted to, he advised strongly, consider going with the automatic transmissions if we have the money in our budget. And we made the statement that we'll more than pay for it at auction time. So the figures I have on the first page are automatics versus manual. So as you probably recall, every time that we order new trucks and sell our old, there is usually an annual increase for the new trucks over the old trucks. So those figures depict that difference. If we stay with the manual transmission, the total for the three dump stators is what's to be expected. And then if we switch to an automatic transmission, the extra $20,000 would be expected for each of those. He's recommended this time not to go to auction with our tractor. He said the market's a little shaky right now on the tractor, and advises to hold on to it as far as ordering purposes and see how, see how things go later on.
We have manual now?
Yes, sir.
We had an automatic a couple years ago. How did that work?
I'd have to look back.
Do you remember, Jason? Remember, we bought one fifty years that we dug in more than our budget cost. It was one year ago, we, we actually, money actually, I'm telling you. They should be better on your employees.
Yeah, his, you know, his description was, that's what, that's how it got up in discussion was, you know, finding folks that can drive sticks in those trucks is a challenge. And he said, well, if you're having trouble with it, you can imagine a huge asphalt contractor in the northeast or northwest that's coming to this auction to buy them, what kind of challenges they're facing in finding drivers that can drive them. If you know the year, if you know the year timeframe, I can kinda do the rundown on.
I don't remember. I just know we bought one automatic truck. I think it was your senior, you know, very good.
It looks like the strongest year we had was in 13 and 14.
Last page.
We paid about $490. And we got there auction for $532. If that was in that year, that was the best, looks like the best year that they've done. Last year, they grossed somewhere around, netted somewhere around $14,000.
The return is the same either way?
Um, I, you know, it's all, it's all based on what he predicts and what the market's doing.
Don't we have a guaranteed return?
Yeah, on the, on the last page, the back page of the correspondence, what we're guaranteed on these, he says is 135, or 132, rather. He thinks they should bring 135 and hope for in the 140 range.
So.
But on automatics, we pay now, and then just be made up when it's time to flip them again?
That's right.
That's what I'm saying. Will we get more for the automatics? That's what we anticipate.
What percentage of trucks during the auctions do we have that can be in automatic versus manual, you know?
I don't. If, if we wanna discuss some of this, or if you, you know, if you'd like me to get some more information to you before we decide which way to go, I'd be happy to chase any of that down and see.
You definitely don't wanna take three automatics down there and then 80% of the auction. I mean, you don't wanna take three manuals, like 80% of automatics, and three trucks.
Do we, we'll have a meeting, work session in two weeks. Would that be when you come in, if we make a decision then, or do we need to decision at that?
Whatever you guys are comfortable with. They're, they're pressing me somewhat to know what you're gonna start building.
Okay. Do we know now? Do we wanna fish it to the market?
I'm willing to go on automatic. I'm moving with automatic.
You know, these are, these are auctioning spring, but basically what we're doing is getting permission from you guys to move forward so that we can have those delivered in February, be set up for a March auction where they exist.
We don't quite be in a situation where we're.
Chuckless.
Chuckless.
Yes, sir. So do we need to go ahead and approve moving forward, and with next year's process, we'll move forward automatics? Okay, do we have a motion to do that?
Motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those say no. Next item, I wish to adopt Higher Reboard Recommendation for vacant Public Works Department HMT one and two positions. We have two different recommendations. We can accept these separately or together.
We can accept them together.
Okay, so we'll accept HMT one and two positions. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? I think we have, this will make a vacant position in the, in the number one, or is this still?
We have two HMT one vacancies.
Where are these?
So our plan is to re-advertise starting today. That'll last for 10 days, and then we'll do an interview process and likely select two candidates out of that interview candidates out of that interview process to name your vacancy.
Any other questions or comments? Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. The next item, motion to adopt the Higher than Reboard Recommendation for the vacant sanitation department temporary position. We have that in the packets. Name for that. So any discussion on that? Motion to accept that recommendation?
Motion.
Motion, second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. The next item, and I think we're currently, we're still advertising for a driver position.
Yes, it ends today at 4:30 and we thought it would be processed publicly in the evening.
Okay, that concludes the items on our agenda and we'll move on to our reports. Right over here, Mr. Carr?
Yes, Mr. Carr.
Nothing.
Mr. Carr?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ball?
Yeah, Mr. Charles Zekke, he's one of you. I proposed along a shop building. I think I was asked to get an isolation for the park project. It's a 60 by 30 building, 14-foot high, roll-up door, concrete floor, and also has an 18 by 60 by 12-foot length to it. And that's, I would come, that, that don't have a concrete floor to it, that's just reality. The whole shop there has concrete floor. And then it's sectioned off in sections for different things that have to be stored in there.
So this for review. We'll see if this needs to be included in the project or needs to be bid separately or if we can just move forward with it. I think it's under the bid law, so as long as it's outside, we'll determine that. Any questions or comments on that? All right. Is it quarter?
It's still quarter right now.
All right. A couple of things. We will not have a meeting next week. We've got the ACCA conference and I think the forum will be at that, so we'll be out for that. And we will have a work session and a meeting together on the 22nd to make up for that. The work session first and the meeting to follow. Also, we'll be posting this online, but I did want to reiterate the board appointments. All of these board appointments or positions, vacancies remain open until they have been appointed. So we'll entertain folks to apply for these positions until they are filled. For the Jackson County Personnel Board, we have three positions. DHR, we have one. Jackson County Water Authority, we have one. The 911 Board, we have two positions. Jackson County Healthcare Authority, we have two positions. Marshall Jackson Mental Retardation Authorities, we have one position. And Alabama Mountain Lakes Tourism Board, we have one position. So several boards needing folks to apply for that. We'll post it online and anywhere else we can. And if you know somebody that's interested, please get them to put their name in and serve them.
We have much interest in, in many letters.
In a couple of them, but...
Could I send them?
Yes.
Current letters?
That, Mr. Bennett, do you have anything? Proud to do that? No? Mr. Bennett, though? Mr. Bennett, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Garrett? Mr. Lemon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that concludes the items on our agenda, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.